Everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its great and loyal official stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, can you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lasky.
Here.
Councilmember Keck.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Rosga.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comment on agenda-related items. Any citizens with correspondence to be distributed to council should provide items to the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting or after the meeting as adjourned, limited to five minutes. Do we have anyone? None? Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterix are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. These items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, consideration of approving a parking lot license agreement with 401 Holdings LLC. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a move from the consent agenda 9A.
Okay.
Did you hear that?
Yeah. Remove 9A. Okay, can I get the motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of 9A?
I will make that motion.
I will second.
Take role.
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Unfinished business, there is none. New business, Lake Shore Keepers, end of year report. Jack Reeve, Lake Shore Keepers Executive Director. No action is required on this item.
Good afternoon. We've really had a wonderful year this year. As per our contract, we do have to do a end-of-year wrap-up of how the season went and therefore beginning the season as well. So here today, just to show off kind of what we did. Overall, as an organization, we were 6,700 tower climbs above last year's numbers, which is a huge improvement from last year. A lot of that had to do with our seven-day-a-week program, going from six days to seven days a week. This was the first time we've done that since 2019, since pre-COVID. So, a lot of that had to do with being open Mondays, extending our season into September, and we hope to do the same here in Manistee. So, I wanted to start with that. Really excited with those numbers personally. Overall, we had a lot of success this year, starting off with in May, receiving some funding to get started. June, we started those operations. Interior cleaning of the lighthouse itself. Once we got the solar panels installed in July, we actually had power supply out there now for the first time in probably over a couple decades. So, we actually were able to have a shop vac out there and sucking up a lot of the interior items. Once we're able to do that, safety railing became a priority. Without safety railing out there, it is a very dangerous place to climb. So, having the solar panel, we then connected that to interior lighting and restored the lighting inside the lighthouse, as well as the power outlets throughout the entire structure itself. The lighting looks phenomenal throughout the entire structure. You can actually see things now, and it's really nice. Hand railings continued throughout the structure throughout the month of August. In September, we held a volunteer rally down at Fifth Avenue Beach. Expected to, personally expected to have about 10 people there. We had 18-plus. So, really, we're encouraged with those numbers. Many of those are willing to come back out and continue helping to paint this year. So, we did paint first floor, completely painted, floors, ceiling, walls. Second floor, we continued on with the, just the floor level. One of our standards as an organization is that you can't wear flip-flops going into the lighthouse. It's a safety concern. You have to have a backstrap at least. We do allow people to climb barefoot, especially being at the beach. So, one of our main concerns is if we want people to climb barefoot, the base level has to be painted. Right now, every level going up to the lantern room has had a received coat up on the floor there, you can see in the image. So, drastic difference between the before and after. You can see the writing on the wall just behind the newly-installed fire extinguisher. That was 2002. U.S. Coast Guard went out there to do some painting. Their names are listed there and their ranking. We decided to keep that and the "we are not painters, but we painted" is what they quoted on that wall. We decided to keep that intact. There's another on the other wall as well, U.S. Coast Guard names. I don't have it in this image, but we decided to keep those intact. But, you can see the hand railing, it's really hard to see, it's black, but it's right next to that ladder system there going up to the second floor. Kind of going down to, this is all first level here, going to second level. Again, hand railing coming up to the second level there. Rest of it stayed mostly intact moving on to that second floor, but going on to that ladder system again, that vertical hand railing going further up the tower. We also closed a gap that was a hazard there as too, as well, with that ladder system. Once again, fully painted, that ladder going up on the second level, going to the third floor, if we could scroll down there. Added the, actually removed that entire structure that was pre-existing, did not have a center post to it, so we didn't want people to fall if somebody was, we do have a height requirement of 40 inches, but certainly somebody tripping down is, it's a hazard. So, we did remove that and put in a complete hand railing system there. We will have, and actually, the floor has been painted on this level since I've taken that photo. So, the ground level is painted. Again, the walls remain the same this year. We'll be adding some historical narratives as we get going for next season. Scroll down, please, that's third floor, fourth level. Removed the tripping hazard there, you can see in the left image. It seems to, it was a unit there to hold equipment. We did have to remove that. We got that approved by National Park Services and State Historic Preservation Office. Hand railing was reattached there, the center hand railing, and that floor level has been painted. I put there some images of that scrolling down a little bit further. Battery pack, you can kind of see it, I know what it is, on the right image there. We did have the battery cells moved. The U.S. Coast Guard did help us move those from the lantern room. There are open cells for open deep-cycle batteries exposed right there. Had those moved to the, that fourth floor, they're sitting right now, and they're encapsulated in a box unit. So, they are protected by, for guests to climb now. And finally, the lantern room. This is the one we still have to paint the ground level for, but we did add that hand railing there, preventing anybody from going down into a hole. And we'll add some additional hand railings on this floor as well. We'll still have the access port to the hatch there to get out in the gallery. We're not going to have guests go out there, but certainly for airflow, it's really nice to have some airflow through there as a volunteer, as a guest as well. Really, the greenhouse effect happens in there. So, a lot of great work happened this year. Definitely looking forward to a season opening next year. The fact that we got so much work done this year means we're actually going to be moving up our date of opening. We did project by mid-season to be open at Manistee. We are projecting Memorial Day, that's May 25th, to open. We're going to have a grand opening on Memorial Day. We have talked with, spoken with the city, spoken with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Tourism Council as well, to make sure that would work well with, throughout the city itself. So, we're looking at a roughly noon ribbon-cutting event with hours of operation on Memorial Day from 1 until 5. That will start our season. So, we will be going from Memorial Day to Labor Day, seven days a week. Mondays will be from 1 until 5. Tuesday through Sunday will be from 10:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. So, kind of an ambitious start, but at the same time, we feel we're ready. We have proper railings in, paint is going to be completed, that lantern room needs to be completed yet. We do have funding to have a historical video produced, we're in production of that right now, that'll be in the main level, and then historical narrative in the tower itself. Actually, just made a document, just started the document, but a kids' activity booklet. Every site has a kids' activity booklet that's given out for free to all students that go through. So, a little bit of education, hands-on learning, and that's given out for free at that site as well. Looks like I skipped a page here before I go into 2025 items, but I wanted to just discuss some promotion that we did this year. You'll see in the concession agreement, it still says Sobel Point Lighthouse Keepers Association. We are still legally the Sobel Point Lighthouse Keepers Association. We took on what's called an assumed name, which is Lake Shore Keepers with a tagline of illuminating West Michigan lighthouses. So, that's what you see there. If you scroll down a little bit further, you'll see our logo on the right side. Our primary goal for this was that we wanted each site to have its own logo. We didn't want to, before with Sobel Point Lighthouse Keepers Association, that is an image of Big Sobel. We are, we're more than just Big Sobel at this point. We're five locations. We need to make sure each site has its own representation. So, each logo looks very similar to the one on the left there with Manistee North Pier Head, but it carries back into the parent company, which is Lake Shore Keepers as the organization. So, we did make that adjustment this year. Again, that's an assumed name, so we are still legally the Sobel Point Lighthouse Keepers Association. As far as outreach here in the community space, did a number of presentations, volunteer rallies, worked with local businesses. Z Cart Rental helped us out with a cart for when we had electricians out there to finish out that power supply. Rob Morris Electric helped us out greatly with power, hooking up power out there. And then continued on with the foundations. Frank and Jennifer Moore Family Foundation helped us out with the funding for the historical, the video supply there, for going through with that, and a lot of the other smaller items, a POS system for the first level. That costs about $1,000, if anybody doesn't know. Those are very expensive units. So, moving things forward, moving things along with that. So, we're definitely looking forward to next year. Continued restoration efforts, you know, painting, continued to painting. We want to be able to have people see what it looks like at the same time before we complete the complete restoration. So, having a process of every year looking for a little bit more improvement, people want to see that. We'll certainly have photos of what it used to look like, what it looked like prior to us being involved at each level, so people get to see exactly what it was. Other items to install, a network system, we're looking at that right now with the city. We would like to install our, install our live camera feeds. So, what we have right now at our top of our towers, one of our mission statements is to increase accessibility to all. How do we do that with almost 100-year-old lighthouse at the end of a pier head? We add a web camera on top of it, is how we've been doing that at other sites. So, right now, we have cameras at all locations minus Manistee and Little Sobel. I did get, I received a quote and an estimate for the installation of that, working through the approval process right now for the city of Manistee, for Manistee North Pier Headlight through National Park Services and Shippo State Historic Preservation Office. I have heard back from Shippo. NPS is currently furloughed because of the closure. So, we're kind of in a pause right now, but certainly we have some time until May of next year to get that resolved. Finishing up gift shop, finishing up historical video and narrative is also still yet to come. I believe that is all. I did submit a proposal for the Manistee North Pier Headlight camera and internet. That is kind of a lengthy document there, but it does have the estimate from Syncwave out of Ludington to do that installation for us. Again, that is actually two cameras, one east and one west-facing. That'll be free to the public to access on our website. We definitely need to make sure that people are coming back to that parent company, seeing who's doing the restoration work, and seeing how that process is going from the ground up. So, a lot of work that's been done this year. We're very excited for it. We do have, I believe at the next meeting, we will have a lease agreement for housing here in Manistee. The lodging was looking phenomenal. I've seen photos of it myself. Very excited. We just opened up our volunteer scheduling for 2026 season yesterday. In the first two hours, we received over 103 applicants in the first two hours of us being open for taking those in, so we're very excited for that as well. Open to questions, the council may have.
Had the opportunity to go through it, Jack, with PEO Group, it's amazing, and the view from the top is breathtaking, and it's a positive for the city, I believe, that it's a little bit scary, it's right in line with our slides and with our best and biggest slides in the state, and also the best and scariest ghost ship in the state, but it's going to be a real positive, so thank you for your work on it.
Yeah, it's great.
There is one location that we need to take a little extra caution with, and that is going from the fourth-floor ladder on into the lantern room itself. My thought is to actually have a box, the ground level. If you can step onto this box without assistance, this lighthouse is for you. If you can't, maybe it's not. You know, there can be that time when we say, you know, this is not necessarily a safe, you know, space all the time. So, climate, climate your own risk.
Worth it, worth it. It's, I've all my life wanted to see what the top was. It's breathtaking.
Yeah, I've watched a few freighters go through in my time being out there so far. It is, just take a moment, take a breath, and just look out, and it's really, really pleasant, so.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Consideration of approving a three-year agreement with Huron Tackle Company. The city owns and maintains a fish-cleaning station at Douglas Park, First Street Beach. The city has contracted with Huron Tackle, asked to manage and remove fish waste from the facility. At this time, council could take action to approve a three-year contract with Huron Tackle Company for an annual amount of $7,000, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I'm just curious how that price falls in line with the last term that we agreed to.
So, it's in line, and it's kind of fluctuated from 7 to 6,000. 2022, it was 5,000, but it's in line, so even since the very beginning when I found a contract back in 2011.
So, it isn't a huge increase?
No.
Okay.
And the big change is that we don't, we're not allowing them to do any sort of staging in the city. So, last year, we had an issue with that. We didn't have any issues this year, we didn't allow it, and it seems to be kind of working well again, so.
Bill, I see that that new marina got sold, not new marina, old marina, got sold down here in the river, and the owner is telling the people to bring their fish waste down to First Street. Can they do that?
I didn't hear anything about that, but it's a public fish-cleaning station. I'd have to look into that.
Well, I, the guy that bought it, he gave all the people who are renting their boats down there, it's quite a mixture. He raised the rates and did a lot of difference, but he said to take the stuff down there.
And so, the way this works, it's paid for out of the refuse fund, and this individual, they process it, they take it to, it gets reused and dog food and things like that, so he'll find like various uses for it, for putting into, you know, farms by it as well. So, it's really, it's been a good situation when it works well for us.
What else?
I did make a suggestion to maybe add a clause that if for some reason they couldn't, equipment breakage or something pulled their into the bargain, and the city had to find an alternative disposal, that there would be a charge. They'd pay part of that or all of that expense.
Good idea, because didn't we run into that, Bill, summers ago?
And the way the contract works, if there's a breach of contract, if they're not fulfilling their obligation, then we'd withhold payment and remedy the situation. So, that's what we did. That's what we did last year, that's what we do if needed.
Okay.
Because it, I know we, we did have an extra expense, I thought.
Yeah.
When we had to call it to Republic, didn't we, two years ago?
Last year, yeah. So, yeah, we cleaned it up and, yeah, we didn't make the payment to them, so that's how it would work. And he was, they were overwhelmed last year, this year it went a lot better.
Okay, anyone else? Heather, can you take, please take role?
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of approving a parking lot license agreement with 401 Holdings LLC. The property owner has agreed to allow the city's use of their lot at 401 River Street for the purpose of food truck court during the Sleigh Bell, Victorian Sleigh Bell Parade and Old Christmas Weekend on Friday, December 5th, and Saturday, December 6th, 2025. Setup would begin at noon on Friday, it would be open Friday evening and all of Saturday until after the parade. At this time, the council could take up action to approve the parking lot license agreement for, with, for 401 Holdings LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I had a discussion, I got a text today, and I actually agreed with him after I read it, and I hadn't thought of it first. And what they said was, they had been like I had to every parade since inception, and, you know, it's no electric, no cars, no lights, and it's dark, the ambiance is, it's a dark, quiet, starry night with the snow falling down, and you hear the horses coming down the street, you hear people laughing, talking, there's some music of singing and whatever. And they said it just doesn't seem to make sense to have generators with loud generators with the smell of gas and hot dogs roasting, that it just is a bad location. You've got someone roasting chestnuts on the corner over an open fire dressed in Victorian, and then you'll have non-dressed people serving hot dogs. So, they said the location is, is not good for that. And then the second thought was, we have a lot of new restaurant owners in town, and they're, this is their big weekend too, the bricks and mortar stores that they need our support, and they're here all year long, this is their last big weekend before the winter hits and the long months and no income, or less income. So, you know, maybe we should honor them, but the bigger thing was the lack of ambiance and deviating from what the intent of this parade originally was. So, either a different location was their idea, or reducing the hours so that, but I don't know if you could shut down the generators at 3:00 and then reopen them after the parade. But after the parade, people kind of just disperse. They go down to the Christmas tree at the end and kind of, they seem to go home. They, after the parade is over, I don't know, or they go to the local store. So, I don't know if you need to have it open after the parade, if you stopped it sooner, or a different location, but I'm not for the location.
I seem to recall food trucks being further west.
Yes, they were.
Yeah, they were on Oak Street.
It seems like this is further away from like the tree and so on.
So, it's more central on River Street with it being at Maple, and it just, it seems, there was a thought of making it a little more, kind of, not in the road, but just kind of more contained and more centralized in terms of the location on River Street, but I do think the point is defining that balance of providing like food and then also, you know, maintaining that Victorian feel. So, I understand where you're coming from, and I could bring it up to the committee, but they thought this would be kind of an upgrade to the food court situation, but...
And if it had to remain there, I think their idea was shut it down a little bit. So, you know, the people are walking, there's usually trombones playing, there's music from like 3 o'clock on, that let that, let that be the focus, that's the intent was when it was started to be, you know. Mackin Island has kept it kind of, has retained the ambiance, you know, don't, let's not lose our focus on that. And that's what they said, and I thought, wow, they might be right. I hadn't thought that issue through.
And I think the Sleigh Bell Committee, when they're responding, I think they get some complaints about the food truck court not being somewhere nicer or in a more, better location, so that's kind of where this came from, but I think that feedback about, should we even have a food truck court, I, you know, we're kind of at the end of the planning stage of this though, but maybe that's something I can bring back to them for future consideration, but it's a, it's a good point, it's a valid point.
So, this is the recommendation from the group who puts on Sleigh Bell every single year.
Yes.
And they are looking for a place where food trucks can be kind of off of the parade route, so that the focus is still on the parade and the end of the parade, which is, you know, the tree setting. And if there's feedback for them to consider about the Victorian-ness of the parade, that that would be considered in the future because of where we are in the timeline.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Thank you.
Or maybe change the timeline, if we could, to end it at 3:30 or so, just shut it down.
On the Saturday?
Yeah, on Saturday, because after that, people kind of go dispersed to a, if they're going to stay around after the parade, they might more go and have a, something to drink or a sit-down dinner. If you have young kids, it's like 9 o'clock or whatever, you're not going to go buy a hot dog. So, and it's the, it's not the location, I think it was just the noise and the conflict of the motors with what our goal was.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing. I mean, if there was an area at the beginning of the parade, you know, like for, it's hard to say what is a good vendor area when...
And is a vendor a good idea when we're supporting our local merchants?
And I agree with that entirely. I also agree that there's a group of people that have been working on this parade, and we have, they've been entrusted with carrying that legacy, even if it looks differently than what I remember the legacy should be, so I, I, I just, I like the feedback to that group.
Isn't Oak Street, did they have it on Oak Street?
Yes. And I seem to recall, I mean, I think the one was just donuts, and that was a local vendor. I mean, we don't, I don't know who the food trucks are, they could be local.
And I don't know how many there are.
Yeah.
I can send the setup to everyone, and I think with it being an event, though, I think having kind of multiple opportunities, I think the businesses will have good days in terms of sales, and I don't know that, sometimes more is more when you add things to, opportunities for people to go to food trucks, but they also have the restaurants, but, but engaging with the, you know, the different businesses on River Street about how they can decorate the windows, if they're going to be involved. We'll be doing another, kind of have flyers to see if anyone will donate, and then I think another opportunity for them to, you know, the restaurants could do some, you know, Victorian, you know, offering for food, so definitely want to see a lot of involvement by the vendors or the businesses downtown. Because it really is a downtown event.
That's our focus, is the existing businesses.
Anybody else? Heather, can you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
I would just like to make sure, Bill, that you'll pass that feedback along.
I will, yes. They have a meeting this Thursday, so I'll pass it along.
In that case, yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember...
Wait a minute, what are, what are we saying yes to?
The proposal as written.
The proposal is...
To give them a parking lot license, to let them move forward, with the understanding that hopefully they'll be...
Well, should we be moving forward before we get feedback? What if they say, no way, we're not doing that, we're going to run it all night long?
Well, it, but that gives that, the motion is talking that that authorizes, Bill, and the mayor to do that.
Okay. Well, to offer that, maybe we should... That's what I, I, I don't mean to, that just sounds to me like we're leaving that way to open. And I don't know, how do you guys read that?
And I see this as a recommendation from the Sleigh Bell Committee, that they're asking council for approval, so...
So, we're, if we don't like it, we should be voting no? And let them come back with a counteroffer?
I agree, Ken.
Bill going in and saying, here's what they're thinking. Am I correct?
Yes.
Hey, I think Bill said that because of where they are in planning, that if this doesn't go through that remote, they've already planned the food trucks and things like that, and us saying, no, I don't know what that would do to that group that's been planning this.
Well, we, it's a month almost, just a little over a month from now, so that it isn't like it's a set and goal, if we're just seeing this for the first time.
And this has not been brought to us prior to this.
Yeah, it isn't set and goal. They might have worked on it, but they haven't probably told, since it's not firmed up yet, I don't think that they've told the food trucks where it's going to be, because we're just seeing the lease for the first time.
I, I think that's the essence of a yes or a no vote. I think not, not to give more discussion, because I think we'll have to do our vote through again, but, yeah.
You trust the Sleigh Bell?
Heather mentioned if you wanted to amend the motion to just limit the hours on Saturday, that could be another option.
You could approve the agreement with the caveat that they don't run it past a certain time on Saturday.
3 o'clock?
Yeah, make the amendment now.
So you could, you could have a motion of second to amend the motion, um, that the agreement, you know, to not run, um, what does it say? It says a setup, um.
On Saturday, so just.
So instead of saying, it says here that it'll be open, that it will not be open on Saturday past three P M.
Yes.
So you would approve the agreement with the amendment that they will not be open past three P M on Saturday.
Yeah.
I'll make that amendment to approve the agreement as written, except with the amendment to not have it open on Saturday, December sixth, after three o'clock with no generators or not to, not to reopen, to have it be shut down, however you want to, okay.
Are you going to reopen after the parade?
No.
Done, done at three?
It's done at nine o'clock there.
I just want a point of order because I believe there was a motion to accept it. We were starting that, so this would be an amendment to that. So yes, so you would have, so you have a motion on the table. Um, and Blake, correct me if I'm wrong here, but they have a motion on the table to approve the parking lot agreement. Um, if they made a motion to amend that agreement, to state that they will not be open past Saturday, or past three P M on Saturday. So they will approve the agreement with the amendment that they will not be open past three P M on Saturday.
Correct. Then you vote on the amendment first, followed by the underlying motion as amended.
Correct. Okay.
So two votes.
Yes. Is that, does that answer your question?
So. I thought I heard you have to close the first.
So what we'll do is we will, your first two, we will not, we'll stop the first vote that we had started.
Okay.
Okay. And now what we will do is we will vote, I, first of all, I need a second on that.
I'll second.
You seconded that, okay.
I'll just add that I'm not sure the commitments of the food trucks, so limiting the hours may have, uh, an effect on some vendors participating.
And I guess I truthfully don't understand how the noise is going to be any different than prior years when it was closer to the Christmas tree. I think I'm, I don't understand why this year it's a problem and in the past it wasn't.
Well, I don't know that it wasn't a problem. I don't think it got brought to our attention in that fashion.
We're correcting it because we keep straying a little bit away from how it started.
I exactly.
Other towns are getting on board on that. They're getting.
Know that I want to approve the original because in my opinion, I'm not sure we should even have food trucks.
Yeah, so.
And Kay, I agree, but I also feel like
Right.
the, the group that makes that decision is the Sleigh Bell Parade and Old Christmas Weekend.
Yep.
And that if we are making changes.
Have different committees for different years. Okay.
If we, are we going to support what they put forward to this city council so that they can go forward with that group's plans with the feedback and our intent so that they can, they can plan appropriately for the future.
Well, I think due amendment.
So, well.
I would like to support it as written.
So, okay, so with the amendment, you can vote yes or no on that. And then we will vote on the original motion. Either with or if the amendment is voted down, then it would be the original motion. Understand. I do. I really do.
You know, the, the one point I'd like to make is, you know, the restaurants and businesses are at capacity that weekend. I mean,
They are.
wild weekend. And having a two or three dollar hot dog or an elephant ear might be more in the budget of some attendees of the parade who can't spend the money for a sit-down meal for a family of five at other stations.
Bluefish.
So it's a little bit more inclusive in my opinion. And kids having a hot dog. I mean, we've had food trucks. I've never heard complaints. You know, we've been in the parade. I, I, I had to, until, until Jim mentioned where they were. We have food trucks.
On the same token, why can't we have an open grill and doing hot dogs like that?
I'm not disagreeing. I think the people who are holding the most information right now are the Sleigh Bell Committee, people who invest in this with our D D A, with other structures that we have. And I think that it's important that they get the feedback, but I also feel it's important that because we do something here for, you know, that we don't know what impact that's going to have to that committee or people wanting to be on that committee in the future to do that work for our city.
Should that have come to us sooner than this to be able to discuss this?
If I could mention, so you approved the Sleigh Bell special event, I think it was about a month and a half ago. This, the only reason this is coming before you is because we're potentially using private property to host the,
I see, okay.
And you're just approving this agreement because we're going to have the public going into private property, so we're going to add them as additionally insured. But I guess if you decline this one, they could just do it on Oak Street potentially as part of the, so that's.
Plan, okay.
But I could take back your.
It's a group, uh, yeah.
But your feedback about the food truck in general can be conveyed back to the committee, but this really is specifically just for the license to use that, that parking lot.
Okay. So where are we now?
So, okay, so there is an amendment that was a motion of a second.
Okay.
I'll do a roll call for that. If it's voted yes, then we will do the original motion as amended. If it's no, then we'll just vote on the original motion. Original, okay. So I'm going to, right now is the roll call on the amendment.
That it shuts down at three and open all day Friday.
That is the amendment, yes. So Councilmember Raditz.
No.
Mayor Protem Smith.
No.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Reska.
No.
Okay. Um, so we're. So how does that work when it's a tie?
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Okay, so that motion did fail. So now we're going to vote on the original motion, which is to approve the parking lot license agreement with four oh one Holdings. Okay. Um, so Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
No.
Councilmember Keck.
No.
Councilmember Grabowski.
No.
Councilmember Reska.
Yes.
Okay, so that one would fail also.
Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement and limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Anybody?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Craig Carmody. Uh, I am a permanent resident of Manistee and, uh, live in the Jocelyn Cove condominium association and serve as the HOA president. Addressing the, uh, the council this, uh, this afternoon, with regard to something that may or may not appear, uh, it's been brought to our attention that, uh, there's going to be some potential discussion on a no wake ordinance on Manistee Lake. Uh, I understand there's a harbor commission meeting, uh, next week and this council has talked about balance and just want to give, uh, just maybe a few nuggets of information for the council to consider, uh, in the light that this may, uh, be a recommendation brought to you at some point in the future. So, you know, as, uh, as residents at Jocelyn Cove, we do get occasionally impacted by wakes. Uh, it hasn't been a major issue in the last couple of years. Uh, the boats have been much more respectful. Uh, and to be honest, probably the waves that we see on a more regular basis have more of an impact than anything else. And you just simply can't control mother nature. When it comes to, uh, you know, the use of Manistee Lake, uh, I think to look at, uh, some good research or some really good peer reserve, reviewed, uh, research regarding the impacts of wakes and the distance from shore. A lot of that peer-reviewed research indicates that four hundred feet away from shore is generally considered safe, uh, as far as erosion or impact. However, uh, wakes do have more of an impact than the same size, uh, wave. So a two-foot wave versus the wake of a boat at two feet is more impactful from the wake of the boat. So I think it's always important to say point, counterpoint that, uh, you know, that is going to be, uh, something that needs to be, uh, talked about. Uh, there's certainly an impact on businesses, uh, charters, uh, for example, leaving, uh, Pier thirty-one. If you say a half mile more of no wake, that is a significant impact on their business, especially repeat business. Because you may say, well, it's only a half mile, but when you multiply that by a trip in the morning and a trip in the afternoon, it will certainly impact your businesses in that area. Uh, so, you know, there's quantitative data, uh, there's qualitative data. I think both should probably be used in the, any, uh, type of, trying to find that balance of what's correct. Uh, some just observational data that I was able to do. If you take a look at a thirty-five foot boat, uh, going on their normal path on a perfectly calm day on August second, after three minutes, there was no wave that ever reached the shoreline. So it had dissipated before ever reaching the shoreline. And that's probably maintaining a distance of about five hundred feet away from the shoreline. So, you know, there's potentially some things that could be considered such as distance from shore as far as wakes, possibly some time restrictions. Uh, most of your charters are leaving well before the light ever comes up and probably, you know, coming back to shore, those are probably, you know, two of the key times well after. I think one of the other concerns maybe that others might have on Manistee Lake is just your recreational boaters and fishermen that, uh, you know, if you're not a courteous boater and are throwing a three-foot wake when you're going by them, you know, the law says a hundred feet, which it's just not, not reasonable to say a hundred feet away from, uh, you know, fishermen in a bass boat is, uh, respectful. It may be legal, um, although you're responsible for any damages incurred. Uh, I, I think it's, uh, you know, there, there are some things that maybe we could do to educate some of our boaters to be a little more courteous out there. So, um, if anything does occur, um, in terms of, uh, studies that need to be done or any, uh, I guess, uh, maybe the form of a subcommittee, I would be a volunteer as far as a property owner, uh, to serve on that. I've got a lot of experience, uh, in my previous career developing policies and having to go through the process of going through, uh, going through research. So would definitely be a volunteer for that. Understand with public comment, there's no feedback back, but, uh, just appreciate the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Bill?
So we did, just an update, we did receive the grant agreement for the man-made lake. Um, it's the acquisition grant through the M D N R, so that'll be coming before council at the next meeting, so. Thank you.
Anybody else? Chief?
Just the status of the Armory and Youth Agreement with River of Life.
Um, I believe, um, city attorneys had some correspondence with their attorney and we tabled it until the November meeting, so it'll be back at that point.
All right.
Yep.
Bill, I'm going back to a few months ago when we were talking about volunteers. If we were going to do the fire hydrants, uh, that kind of got ruined. You were going to check into volunteers to see what kind of, uh, agreements we could make with volunteers because to me, a volunteer is doing something that people can't do. And I know a few of the fire hydrants were done this year, but very few. And so I'm just concerned that, did you ever find out about volunteers?
Yeah, and I know we met with the union and I think it's, they didn't think that was a good, um, volunteer project, but, yeah. So I think it was, yeah, it wasn't something we wanted to pursue in terms of having volunteers paint fire hydrants.
So I mean, they're talking about doing ten a year. When volunteers could do the brushing, do the painting and get most of these things done every couple of years. I think it's too bad that, you know, volunteers can't do their job. Also those green boxes, uh, the one on Maple and Twelfth is shot. Wires are hanging out of it. I've discussed this for a couple of years now. One up the hill is total way down to the ground. If you ride around town, you can see these things are broken up and being hit by trucks and everything. So I know they're not being used. Jeff said he went down to Athens, Scuzia School back a couple of years when I told about it. And he said, oh, they were working. And we rode around, you and I.
And we did find a contact, um, I think it's the, yeah, A T and T that fixes those boxes when we find them, but so I can look at those locations and report them.
Oh, it's hanging right open again.
Okay, yeah, we can report that.
They need to tape it, do something.
We can report that. So, yeah, if you see them, just let me know the location. I'll send them over.
I, I discussed with the chief just before we came in about the cars parking against the flow on, all over town.
Oh, terrible on Sixth Street. Terrible on Sixth Street.
And, uh, also I got a call just before I came down here that some gentleman walking through the man-made would like to see, maybe the city could put up, put up dog bags or something because he said it's getting to be, it's like with people walking their dogs down there. And, you know, something could be done, put up some signs. They recommended, but they still have to have some bags.
So, okay, that's something I could pass along to the Parks Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms.
I have nothing in particular. Thank you to Mr. Greavy and Mr. Carmody for your input on these things. Everything's going well. Thank you.
Ms. Lasky.
The gateway has been extended. I saw it. Um, are there going to be any improvements or any brownfield money spent improving the underground in this year and a half extension or any, what is the progress?
My understanding, they, they're looking at doing some soil removals. And, yeah, I don't have a specific timeline. I've been told it's coming, but I don't have anything else.
And any update, um, what's going on at the old Mercy Hospital up on Hospital Hill?
No, I don't have anything to, to share publicly on that.
Okay. Nothing? I just want to say thank you. Uh, again, we've had some visits from our local law enforcement at our school systems. We have very tiny people and very large fire gear, uh, to celebrate Fire Safety Month. So just, uh, thank you for not only keeping us safe, but, um, for helping educate our future citizens.
I'm all set. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.